Welcome, this is the amenities committee meeting on Tuesday the 4th of July at 6 o'clock. Thank you very much for coming. Item 122/23, does anyone have any declarations of any disclose or pecuniary interests? Thank you very much. Item 123, apologies for absence Karen.
Councillors Brindford and Tarby.
Thank you very much. 124, minutes from the amenities committee, these are the minutes from our meeting held on the 6th of June. They were received by full council on 27th of June. Is everybody happy that they're a true record? Yeah, thank you very much. We'll go straight on to item 125, town team managers' report. Thank you Nick for your report which was circulated in advance. Hopefully everybody's had a chance to at least have a skim through. We missed you last month.
Okay.
We didn't do your report justice last month, so I'm sure there's a couple of bits in there you'll want to highlight. But if you could take us through the report, that'd be great.
Yeah, okay, so the team over the month of June have been carrying out a range of tasks including the various amounts of maintenance and cleaning to the town street furniture. We've got this report as reports on any faulty items under Breckland Council and Norfolk County Council ownerships. Other works have also included graffiti removals to play parks, street furniture and the clearance of vacant allotments and the cemetery site and flower beds. Correspondence with other councils, working relationships are being built stronger at working alongside both Breckland Council and Norfolk County Council. This will see Breckland Council carrying out new replacements to old rusted and degraded litter bins and dog bins around various areas of town on Breckland owned land and assets. These will be at the following locations so far reported. Parkway adjoining the Anne Bollefmu Road to St Helen's Way, two dog bins with bottoms corroded out. In closed screen space, an old open top bin. Minister Gate underpass, a silver open top litter bin. Blaydon Bridge, a new litter bin is required due to a corroded one. And the Priory Car Park, also a new litter bin to replace a corroded one. Requests were also recently sent to Breckland Council to see if they could help alongside their contractor Serco on the lead up to the important event of the Anglia and Bloom. They have agreed to work alongside Fettford Town Council and support us with making the town look its best with improvements to litter collections and street cleansing etc. Further support has now also been asked to Norfolk County Council for weed control of the town centre pavement areas as well as the cleaning and improving of signage that's now degraded. The town team will continue to monitor all the bins and benches that are under the town council ownership and replace and clean where needed. At Breckland have also confirmed that Serco will clean any reported litter bins also need an attention on their land. Requesting offer county council have been made to seek a new traffic control bollard at the entrance to King Street that can be locked into place with emergency services and Serco having access and availability when needed. We are still waiting on action on this. They've also been requested as a high priority to fix the missing roadside curb close to the bus station where a red barrier is adjoining the highway presently, but we are still again waiting on action on this.
Just pause you there, I'm going to take it in sections because there's quite a lot there and I want to give my days a chance to ask any questions. So on the correspondence with other councils, does anyone want to contribute anything to that section? No, just two points from myself. One, a plea to you as councillors, if you spot any bins that need action, whether they are corroded or needing a wash or for any number of reasons, then feed it into Nick and the team, there's a report it button on the website. Breckland still own an awful lot of street furniture in the town, but Nick's been working hard to get that relationship established and it's what is unheard of, but Breckland are being proactive at cleaning street furniture, so let's take advantage of that and get a few things done. We do own quite a few, but that's a really positive list. The only other thing I'd mention is the roadside curb, this is the one on the corner of St Nicholas Street, London Road, it's been there forever. I spoke to county about that today because I saw that in your report. It is scheduled for repair before the end of July.
Brilliant.
So by the time we next meet, it should hopefully be resolved. They're having to liaise with traffic management, given where it is, they're going to have to block off a section of the road. It's not just a missing curb, there's a huge hole underneath, it's quite dangerous, but they are now aware of the issue and they're going to work on that. Thank you.
So street furniture, the team have recently been cleaning and washing street furniture as part of the regular cleaning schedule. This has taken place around the town centre and around the estates and play parks. Items have been cleaned so far include litter bins, benches, signage and pavement areas. Memorial benches at the cemetery have also now been added, cleaned and refurbished with preservative as part of the maintenance schedule and the team continue to routinely wash these on a weekly basis and maintain them. Planted some floral displays, this year's floral displays have now all been added to the town centre and all areas have now been planted up. This now brings a splash of summer colour and uplifts the public areas for the town and its visitors. The contractor is working hard on maintaining these in readiness for the Fett Anglia and Bloom entry for 2023 and the date has now been confirmed and we will be visiting the judge on Monday the 10th of July by three of the main judges. The town team have also been busy working at the local cemetery on revamping the flower beds and barrels to get the site attentive for those visiting their loved ones. We have also entered this into the cemetery category as part of the Anglia and Bloom cemetery category. The team have used a mix of perennial bee and wildlife friendly planting on site for this year's scheme. Moving on.
Yes, sorry Doug.
So there's a question, last month I feel like we talked about volunteers and how they could help out with planting. Did you have anything happen on that as well?
So that's something we're looking at now is to obviously establish a volunteer group that we can get in and obviously maintain going forward. And then obviously we'd look at the autumn planting as well, so that'd be really great to get the community involved.
Yeah.
Cool, thanks.
Okay.
Yep.
So. Yeah, I was just thinking about in places like Lady Gentle Meadow where we produce the planting.
Yes.
Do you think, is there any scope for us to mob in some wildflower seed bombs or something like that? Because it's a great topic, well wildflowers, something like that maybe. I've seen anybody doing some gorilla seed bombing.
That's on Lady Gentle, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Shall we look at that?
Now it's the time of year, well, not a month, isn't it?
Okay, that's useful suggestions. Just on the Anglia and Bloom for newer councillors, you have to pay per category that you enter with Anglia and Bloom. We've decided to enter two categories this year that we felt the council was particularly strongest in. One being the cemetery, the other being town centre floral displays. It's £300 a category, so you don't want to be spending all your money just entering for the sake of it. I wish you spend all your budget on entry fees rather than actual plants and the like. But those two areas are particularly strong for us. Last year we entered and I can't remember if it's the cemetery or the town centre floral displays, but we got silver. We got silver for one of those, which is really encouraging. One of the things the judges were particularly impressed with, with the amount of volunteering that goes on in Fettford. You know, people helping with weed clearance or planting or all sorts of different things. So Nick and I have been talking about maybe organising a litter pick for this weekend, bearing in mind that the judges are coming on Monday. So we've just got to work out, it's a bit last minute.
Count out.
Recently that the judges are coming on Monday the 10th. But if we do manage to get something set up for the weekend, we'll put an email out to everybody and put it on Facebook. But the judges will respond quite well, I think, to evidence of the community getting involved in readiness for the judges, so.
There's an event on in the cemetery this weekend, I'm in there on Saturday, so I might as well do the cemetery.
Yeah.
So that's done.
That's great, yeah, appreciate that. Okay, next one?
Yeah, so moving on, water supply works. The permanent water supply works have now begun and the contractor is busy installing the pipework and troughs to both sites of Barnham Common. Anglia Water has also now confirmed that they will inspect and connect the pipework once installed by the contractor to the mains network. And this will mean that the fresh drinking water troughs for the livestock will be installed on site with a mains feed for future years of management of the site. These will then regulate and automatically refill when the water trough levels drop. The livestock can help with our town team as at present, they are taking water and it's being delivered twice weekly to site. Grazing, site management plans have now been circulated to all councillors for the open spaces. We're in the process of contacting Norfolk Wildlife Trust, Mr Fox who wrote our management plans for the sites, to see if they have any availability to come and hold a presentation and talk with the committee about the site maintenance for the sites and especially Castle Park and how we go forward. We will then arrange a site meeting and presentation for the committee to go through, the best way forward with the management of the sites and how this should be proceeded, especially with the issues surrounding the Castle Park particularly, and how we manage this site until grazing potentially commence.
Is everybody happy with that? Because I certainly had a read of the management plan and I thought they were very good, I understand a lot more as a result of that. But it would be good to get Norfolk Wildlife Trust in, separate to a meeting and we'll have a briefing session and give you guys a chance to ask some questions. So appreciate that, Yain, did you have a point on that one?
I only wanted to check that they had been circulated because I'm receiving them anyway.
Okay. Everyone else received them? I'll forward them on to you.
If I'm mistaken, I may have just missed them.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
And I hope I wasn't the only one that enjoyed Mr Fox writing the management plan for the spaces. So that was Fettford. Thank you, that's really positive about grazing, so I'm pleased that we're up for action in that and there's a big piece of work that Norfolk Wildlife Trust have done for us all three, so gives us a chance to thank them when they come as well. Next one?
Yep, play parks. We've unfortunately received a stream of vandalism at several of play parks and their equipment. This is included mainly Richard Eastern, Main Street, Fairfields. We've reported this through to Norfolk Police and the repairs are now all booked in with the contractor for the repairs to be carried out. Unfortunately at present, the damage caused is estimated that the cost will be around £4,604.68. The play park repairs at Castle Park Junior Play Area is the next site to receive some upgraded maintenance works as part of the larger maintenance programme. This will see the old degraded wood chip and log edge in removed that was originally installed when the play area was created. This will be revamped with rubber mulch surfacing which will be a longer term and more durable surface for the site and its users around the equipment. The boulder and galaxy equipment further along also located at the site will also receive new surfacing to replace the old degraded rubber matting originally installed when the play was constructed. Historic England have been contacted and we are now still awaiting confirmation of an approval for scheduled ancient monument consent to be granted for the works to proceed further at the site. It is hoped that the works will commence to be completed during July before the summer holidays begin following Historic England's consent and approval. There's a few pictures on the report of some of the damaged equipment that we received. Moving on, the skate park. After much correspondence with original skate park installers, the concrete surface repairs have all now been carried out, completed and checked. Norfolk Police attended sites to look and advise on what could be done to try and assist with the helping to deter the antisocial behaviour aspect that occurred previously on the site. They recommended three different options of advice from their visit and these are thorn style type hedging also along the boundary, this was previously there and ripped out. Fenestra in the perimeter edge of the site adjoining the field. Providing the youth shelter structure on the site as an additional facility. The town team have carried out maintenance to the area and filled in the holes and uneven areas and replaced the skate park signage previously vandalised. They've also installed a new litter bin to the site and plan to replant the hedging as soon as the best time of year is recommended for the replanting to happen. If agreed with the committee, we could also relocate a bench from Barnham Common Car Park Green Space as previously discussed at the last amenities meeting to provide a site with this extra facility. We are now also working with the academy to see if we can also get the damaged fence repaired as this is believed to be owned by them that joins the car park. Hedging will be replaced when the weather allows and the gap reclosed in.
Okay, and that's really positive news because we only debated about the skate park last month, so I'm pleased that we've been able to action a lot of that. That picture, is that the revamped sign? The skate park, the big square one?
Yes, I believe it is.
Brilliant, because that was in a complete state last month, so that's a big improvement. And I'm pleased the holes have been filled in because obviously it's a health and safety issue. Did we make any progress with the lights and the solar panels?
I'm looking at trying to get a contractor who's got accessibility to the height, that's the issue with the team at the moment, they haven't got accessibility to that height, but I'm certainly working to try and find a contractor that can help.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions about play areas or skate park? Hazel?
I was wondering, do we know, so the police obviously attended, I'm guessing they attended when nobody was there, they didn't talk? Because I think one of the issues we discussed was incorrect usage of the parks, so people using bikes. So I'm not sure if they didn't, or if they didn't speak to anyone to ask what the issues were, then these might not be.
That's something I've forgotten to, I can go back to them and ask, whether they've communicated and yeah?
I'd imagine they went probably about 10 in the morning, kids.
Yeah, because obviously we discussed it being bikes and that being the reason for the fence and shelter isn't going to help with that issue.
Is there a general consensus in favour of moving the bench? I'm loathe to spend street furniture budget money on a new bench when we've got two benches at the bottom of Barnham Cross Common. I'd much rather use one that's underused and put it in a location where it will be used, but before we did that, we wanted to make sure people were happy, so is there sort of general happiness with that? I have made a point of every time I drive to Barry looking over, as luck would have it, I did see somebody last week, which is the first person I've ever seen using that bench, but you know, I think it's probably Chris Harvey. It was him that moaned last month about moving it, but you know, most benches are about £500 a pop and I'd much rather buy new equipment if we absolutely have to and renew stuff, so that's encouraging. And the point I was going to make about vandalism, Nick, we went through a phase where there was all sorts of graffiti to street furniture, bins, benches, the Thomas Paine statue plinth with graffiti over it, that seems to have died down. Now we've moved on to planting and there was a spate of plants being ripped out in the town centre and I haven't heard updates about that.
Which we've been okay.
The latest issue is play areas, I mean £5,000 within a month of damage to play areas. People say to me all the time, why don't we make improvements to, our list is endless what we could be spending money on. But in the last six months alone, I'd say probably £10,000 in vandalism. You know, I think it is important that we record these figures in the reports because that's £10,000 we don't have for nice things. Spending it to stand still, we're not making any improvements, so it is important that we document that and it's frustrating, but I'm not sure if there's an answer, but.
No, it's quite sad really because the three play parks that we've had the recent vandalism on, we've never ever had any problem at all on each of those sites. It's just unfortunate that those three sites have always been the best, you know, that we've never had no vandalism, then just suddenly we just have this spate on the three.
Okay, we've got Mac then Hazel, please.
Just an observation really, we did have that problem with the graffiti and other bits, but I think what happens is once we we remove all the graffiti, it kind of takes the wind out of their sails and it's the same with any other damage that happens. And unfortunately it's just going to be one of those costs. But I do think it's a good point that you make, the chair, that we ought to let the town people know that by preventing this and being proactive as we are, it's all part of the safer neighbourhood deal of Fettford. You know, there is an easier way of doing it, we just don't spend the money and the place at all. But you know, we should record it.
So, and I think it's to Nick and the team's credit that they do methodically report all of these incidents to the police. And I mean, God knows how many reported numbers and stuff we have, but it is an accurate reflection of what's happening, they do report it quite methodically. Hazel?
That kind of answered my question, I was going to ask if it was reported to the police and whether things have been done to stop the vandalism or if it is just random, but perhaps it's like you say, that actually by cleaning all the graffiti, they get bored and move on to something else.
There were a couple of incidents where we provided CCTV and the police did speak to some young people. And did sort of have a conversation with them about, you know, how much this is costing and this money could be spent on other stuff and I think that was quite successful.
It was, yeah, yeah, and I think one of the younger ones that they also got involved, they also got them to sort of put some, you know, time back into the community. So they actually went round and done some cleaning themselves, so obviously it was a bit of payback for what they'd done to our heritage building at the time, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Carla?
I was just going to say, it's likely that the groups that tend to cause vandalism, they are sort of nomadic. Once they're sort of done in one place and see that, you know, they get tired of it, it's been cleaned up. And the sort of, the groups kind of shift around different locations of town. That's probably why the three parks have never really had problems before and now seeing spouts of banalism while the other ones have subsided, they sort of move around in groups and that's probably why.
Okay, well, keep reporting and I know it's frustrating, I know the team particularly when they put a lot of their own effort into it, it's frustrating, but we certainly appreciate it, thank you. Next one?
Yep, SAM2, speed activated signs. So the SAM2 machine is all serviced and calibrated and updated and ready to be put out to community use. This is now ready to be placed at the various locations by the town team in due course and it is hoped that this will be following tonight's amenities meeting. The first area that will have the machine operating, as previously agreed, is the Cloverfields area. An order has also now been placed for the mountain pole agreed by Highways and Historic England to be installed at Castle Street, ready for the machine to also be used within that area.
Everyone happy with that? Yeah, so we wanted to make sure we've got the sign off tonight, but that's been actioned remarkably speedily since the last meeting, which is great news. What, Doug then Mac please?
Very happy, I just take where exactly it goes, I did wonder.
There was a location, it was on Rosecroft Way, but I can't remember where. I think it was near Rosecroft, yeah.
It might have been coming out of Corianza Drive, like off where that bus stop is, right off of there.
I think it was largely identified by the residents group.
Yeah. Just on that one, is that one going on there, a street lamp?
So that'd be going on street lamp, that one?
Yeah, the cars.
Yes.
We haven't put a pole up there yet.
No, no.
Okay, and we've already got one mounted at Mumford, can go.
Mumford, yes.
You know, if the worst comes to the worst, we could potentially pick up between those two, not ideal, but yeah, Castle Lane would be really good because they're a very strong way.
It is.
A very strong vocal group down there, if you would like to see something happen.
Well, everything's in place, so you know, it'll be a bit suck it and see, I think, to be honest with you, for a while. I'm quite keen that we as a council are proactive and produce a press release outlining why we're doing this and we're responding to requests from residents groups and this is a good partnership between us, the county council and councillors, as in Jane James who funded the brackets. So it's, you know, it is a good news story, I hope, and it's part of our ongoing effort for road safety, so there'll be a press release imminent and the signs will be up imminent too, so I think it's really good news. Okay?
Okay, so the Riverside Sculpture Trail. We're continuing to work alongside a chainsaw sculptor and signage companies on this project. We are now awaiting some costumes of lectern information boards and panels and these will be proposed to the committee in due course to decide and consider. Unfortunately, all the previous trees that were identified as possibilities, the sculptor is unsure if these are viable to look at as due to the age and condition of them. And the best way forward is that each sculpture may have to be created and brought to site with fresh solid wood and fixed into place instead. Further updates will be available as soon as more information is obtained following his visit to look at and assess the areas.
Okay.
Moving on, other projects that the team have also been working on recently include allotment clearances. The team have continued to clear and reallocate the vacant allotment plots to new tenants as quick as possible. We aim to reduce the waiting lists and more plots have now been recreated by having bigger plots to help with the demand of numbers of public waiting for an allotment plot on the waiting lists.
Yeah, I used to have an allotment in Barry. I do notice, I do see pots being cleared. And some of them need it, you know, particularly if they're overgrown with rambles or bugbear or whatever else it is. But I do wonder if this is a good use of council resources, given that the the premise when I had a plot at Barry was always that you take on and maintain the plot, however it was given to you, and that was a kind of, almost like an initiation, it sort of weeded out a lot of people who would do a good job and those who wouldn't etc. So I'm a little concerned that we're going about doing this sort of stuff when in the end the people who rent the plots are going to have to clear it anyway, aren't they? Because, you know, look at those pictures there, that's grass, you're going to have to do a lot of digging on that anyway. So I wonder if it's a good use of resources.
So primarily it's mainly a lot of sort of rubbish and stuff that's left by the previous tenants. Sometimes they've just sort of walked away and left, you know, bits and pieces in sheds, so we have to obviously remove anything hazardous. Yeah, so it's mainly the rubbish element that they do clear and then obviously it's stripped down to ground level and then it's ready for the next person, but I mean, it's primarily the rubbish clearance that we do, yeah. We do get through a lot of skips of rubbish sometimes in the sense of.
There is a policy about allotments and I remember, I never used to be on the allotments committee, but we used to have a big problem with tenants leaving them in estate and the new tenants come in and either saying, you know, they're not prepared to take it on, or when they left, they said, well, we're leaving it in the state that we found it in, it's like when you move in, you know, rental house or whatever. So I think there's a policy that dictates that we will clear it before you move in. So that we can hold them to that standard. And I think there is a fee as well if they.
I was about to say, it would seem appropriate, you have some sort of deposit then, wouldn't you?
Yeah, we'd certainly hold a deposit.
I'm not sure what the deposit is. We're straying into allotment committee territory, but it would be sensible to review that policy to make sure it's still relevant. How much time roughly do you think we're spending on clearing allotments?
So we try and average it on about a day a week at the moment.
How many members is that?
So that's normally three.
That is quite a chunk, a lot.
Quite a chunk.
Okay, so well, as the vice chair of allotments, I shall leave that one to you to pass.
Like I said, we have actually put a gender out of this, that we can actually discuss this in the allotment committee.
Brilliant, thank you. Mac?
I tried to get your attention on the previous note, it was just, we moved on a bit quick. It was just about the trees and the sculptures, now I know that this has been a longstanding thing and, you know, they were assessed eons ago to be good.
There were acorns at that point.
Yes, they're no longer any good. There's two questions that come out of it, firstly, have we had any other sculptors make the same decoration?
We're trying to get that at the moment.
And secondly, if they're not going to be anything done with them, are we just going to have the dead carcasses left there? The whole purpose of it was to transform those into something worthwhile. Because if not, then they need taking down because by that token, they must be dangerous, surely.
Some are on our land, very, very few number, but some are also on Breckland's, so it's a bit of a controversial one with them as well, but obviously we can look into that. We have got another sculpture that we're in touch with at the moment, we're hoping to get him to come and have a look as well. So obviously you want, like you said, you know, consistent opinion on the same thing that we've been told.
And just while we're on it, I mean, that's really good, I've also seen where other sculptors have been done where the tree is no longer suitable. What they've done is taken it down and grafted on a new piece, so it hasn't been a whole sculpture you've got to do, it's just a part of.
Yeah.
Okay.
That might be it.
Yeah.
Thank you. I did wonder, I was going to mention it separately, but we are constantly managing trees that we do own. And occasionally they do have to come down.
They do.
And I wondered if, you know, over the next year, because this will take time to be remembered. And if we do take some down over the next year, we can, you know, put them to one side, show us they and store them appropriately, ready to be sculptured because a big part of the cost if we pay a sculptor will be a pain in the wood in.
That's right.
We have plenty of trees. I wouldn't make a defence of some of our tree stumps, they are habitats for wildlife, but not completely, no purpose. Yes, I take your point. Next.
Okay, so moving on, conservation volunteers. The volunteers have been busy working alongside David, our town team member, through the last month. Recent group tasks have included volunteers carrying out with a national monitoring survey and recording the many gut of fly species found on the sites of Barnham Common. The group also took part in walking the site and looking for wildflowers and recent vegetation management over the last winter has opened up the ground. This in turn during the walk showed natural wildflowers developing well in these spaces. Other areas have been worked on and maintained, it's a creep and marsh walk. This has shown significant results where volunteers along with the advice from Plantlife recreate areas to encourage the growth of this rare plant to survive. This very rare plant is now showing significant signs of great success within the area. Moving on, the volunteers have also continued to work hard and support the cemetery site and this has included weeding the newly planted hedges, litter picking, maintenance of flower beds and borders and the ponds. Fence line and litter patrols have also been regularly tasked for the group. And this has included walking the entire site of the common, checking all gates and fences are in good working order as well as litter picking. Works to the main street woods were carried out and volunteers cleared some pathways and cut back overhanging vegetation along the pathways as well as litter picking the woodland site. David on the behalf of the group has also been building his skill set up to continue the great work with the volunteers and he's attended a B F E R collaborative workshop where he made useful connections with other organisations to help promote all our open spaces. He has also attended a course on leading enjoyable guided walks and we hope that throughout the year going forward, we will be able to provide guided walks of our open spaces for people of the town and its visitors. This we hope it will not only promote. This, we hope, it will not only promote these wonderful areas, but help local people and visitors understand how important these green spaces are to the town. And that we are so lucky to have their significant importance for the many species of wildlife and wildflowers these are home to. The total number of volunteer hours over the last month is equated to around 63 hours. Month of July, we now see the volunteers carry out tasks below. And these will include helping preparation of the Angler in Bloom, vegetation clearance around the Creep and Marsh Walk, making new nest boxes for next season, ragwork clearing Barnham Common alongside the BFER, guided walks and plant monitoring scheme surveys.
Brilliant. Thank you very much for that, Nick. Terry.
This creeping marsh wall seems like another good news story, doesn't it? I think we should be promoting that, don't you?
I wish we discovered a farmer didn't sound quite so dingy, but creeping marsh wall. But yes, we are, we are one of two locations in the whole of the UK for creeping marsh wall.
It sounds like a Marvel villain, doesn't it?
It is a good news story. And I've suggested to Nick that when the Angler in Bloom judges come on Monday, that we amend the judging route and we're going to take them down and show them the creeping marsh wall. Because, you know, that's been looked after by us. So it's a good, is a good news story. I'll make a note on possible future press releases about that specifically. There is a briefing paper, I don't know if you've managed to find it yet, explaining its significance. Okay, if we do manage to find it, it'd be quite handy to second that to councillors, just so we can understand.
It only grows in this area, doesn't it? Obviously dangerous, is that right?
I can't remember where the other location is. It's a distance.
It's quite a way, yeah. Yeah, we're quite fortunate within this sort of Norfolk County that we were the only one who has that on our land. So it's like you say, a really good news story. And obviously, you know, the work the conservation volunteers have done, it's really encouraged it to flourish.
So it was them that found it.
That's right.
I've just remembered the other, one of the, I can't remember if it's a moth or a butterfly, but one of the particularly rare ones round here is the dingy skipper. That and creeping marsh wall, we've got that collection. I was going to ask something, sorry. Hazel first, then Yon.
I was going to say, if I, we can offer advice on the nest box that's being built and placed, we'd be happy to.
Be absolutely brilliant.
Thank you. Yon, do you have anything else?
What was I going to say? Oh, ragwort. So Nick is going to organise a couple of sessions, certainly a session, clearing ragwort from Barnham Common. And we're thinking about turning that into a bit of a specific event and inviting volunteers to come and help with that. And so there'll be some detail circulated. So if people want to take part, that would be good. And the plant monitoring scheme, I'm really pleased that we've started to build up a bit of a database. And I'm very keen to work out what impact our new wildflower meadows have had. So there must be some historical data about plants that were there. And if we can do a survey at some point this year to see what difference is made. And then we can track it over time. I think that's really important.
I think ragwort is really beautiful. There was black and orange caterpillars as well. And then moths, cinema moths. So I don't know if there's a way they can delay putting it until later in the season.
One of the things they looked at was obviously having buckets on site and they could then obviously collect them and move them. So that was one of the things that they were kind of talking with our partners, the BFER project, that they could obviously collect them and move them. So they were wanting to be safe and we wasn't destroying the habitat for them. So we were also trying to sort of look at ways that how we could then move them to somewhere else. So yeah.
Moths are beautiful, aren't they?
They are, really, yeah.
Really quite striking.
Not sure of ragwort.
Ragwort, that's a horse, isn't it?
Yeah.
We haven't got any answers, so.
Yeah.
It's about goats or sheep.
No, I should, well, I assume it's not good for them either, but cows, I suppose, eat probably quite a lot of it. So that's the problem in horses. Does anyone have any further questions or comments about Nick's report? Did I miss anybody?
No, as ever, Nick, really useful. And it kind of gives a very good overview of the range of the town team's work. I mean, we cover from, from play areas to rare plants and speeding up to nest boxes. So, you know, there is a lot of variety there and I certainly appreciate you relating it for us and providing photos. Would you like to see the difference that we're making?
Good. Right. We'll move on then. Where are we at? What's that one? Town team report decisions to consider the following decisions from the town team managers report.
It's a Doug.
That's a Doug one. You don't want any decisions from us. Pots. No, no decisions today. Good. 12723 preliminary, I can't even say the word, preliminary financial report. This was circulated today. Is there anything, Alan, you want to add to the interim finance report?
Just to say why it's generally is that we only get the information quite late because the end of the month was a few years ago. Invoices came in yesterday and we had to wait for the passwords to come through this morning so that we could actually accrue. So that's, that's relatively accurate. I mean, there might be one or two invoices that have still come through. On the income side, we have a very quiet income in the first three months. We've got some open space income and we've got some income from UK power networks for the rental that they pay us where they put the pylons on our, on our bay. But there's nothing there. Most of the income comes through at the end of the year. All our claims have been submitted to the Rural Payments Authority. The deadline was May. That's, we've had confirmation, that's all been done. I've always left money to come in at the end of the September, January. From an expenditure perspective, we've actually had very low expenditure. All the invoices are in from our contractors. So it's not because we haven't processed them. But there's just two items that I'd just like to bring to the committee's attention. The first one is paypots. Sitting in that figure of £7,000 is, is the amount of money that we spend in correcting the, you know, fixing the vandalism. And some of it is also the development. When we get the invoices, they come from the same company, we're just putting them through. We will do it and I'll sit down with Nick, quite shortly, do an analysis and say, this is what, what we funded from our capital budget. And this is what comes from the operational budget. So that we have a far more active figure there. But that is, that is the total cost. And the other thing I'd sort of bring to attention is the small grants. Unfortunately, there was four small grants that basically carried forward from last year. We couldn't accrue them because the paperwork hadn't, we hadn't got back all the paperwork to show that we had the liability. So we've done three grants this year and we've done four grants last year. But we'll probably have the same thing. We've paid people in February next year, February and March, will approve small grants. And it's probably likely that those small grants will only come up in the next financial year. But otherwise, there's nothing, there's nothing of concern. We're doing okay against budget. And let's just hope our historic buildings like St Peter's behave for the next few months.
Sorry, on that, just maybe misleading completely. We obviously last time talked about the goal hall cost. Today, can I then give you some part of the budget?
The goal hall costs would be any maintenance cost on the goal hall would come into here. At the moment, we're doing a major, you know, fixing up the two towers. We've identified that as a project cost. We've actually, actually funding that from, from rest payment. We've hopefully given grants in terms of doing that. So that's a capital that's been budgeted to reserves. So it's be funded from reserves. So.
There's probably more of finance and personnel question, Alan. But obviously the committees have changed and we're now amenities and cemetery. Do you have a time estimate of when the financial report will catch up and we'll see, you know, cemetery and everything else included within that?
As the cemetery report was, was prepared, I just haven't, if we come back today, I just haven't had a chance to really get to it. So I don't want a bit of intervention, but I will consider that there.
Okay. Yeah, good. There's not too many changes for amenities, but be good to have everything. That's fine. No further questions? So yeah, Hazel.
I was just looking, because we talked about the small grants. Was it in the previous meeting or full council? I can't remember. But so the £6,000 is the annual total that we, the budget. And we actually only spent £2,000 on that last year.
I know, that's this month.
Oh, this month.
This year, so three months of the year, first to June.
Okay, okay.
So we've budgeted 20 grants essentially for the year. We've never done 20 grants, but we also, as one of our actual points, have, will look at the revising policy, whether we look at increasing the amount to compensate for the smaller number of applicants we get.
The actuals for last year on, on here, if you, the report that goes to finance does include actuals for last year. So you'll be able to see how much we spent on small grants last year.
I'd look to that. I thought, anyway, okay, never mind.
Yon?
Yeah, I guess one way of dealing with the, trying to deal with the vendors and the parks issues to change the the equipment we've got there, maybe remove some of it.
Yeah.
Because I know, I guess maybe we'll have a budget for it, but I think there's a really good guidance set down now for how you can encourage more use of parks based by girls, for example, because often the kind of design and layout and equipment of the park is not very attractive to them. But I just wonder if there's a score for us to use some of that kind of guidance when we get the opportunity to upgrade the equipment or change it to make sure that we're making it accessible and accessible to girls as well as. There's a charity called Fox Girls.
And we'll be talking about possible upgrades to a play area later. So bear that point in mind. So we're required to note the financial report. Is everyone happy to note?
Yep.
Move on to previously mentioned small grants. We don't have any to adjudicate on tonight. But Alan did circulate the total for last year.
And those are the grants that reached last year. So you can see. There was recently a £2,600. That's probably the four that carried over £2,000. So we did come within, if we'd had managed to accrue them, we would still have been below that.
Yep. And we spoke last month about reviewing the small grants policy and possibly amending the amount, the total that people can apply for and the types of things that we will fund. So Alan's going to work on that. And I think it's September amenities meeting, August or September. So that will be forthcoming. But in terms of small grants, we're just asked to note the report at the moment. Happy?
Yep, thank you.
And the next one, so we've got one, two and three under agenda item 129. The first is parish partnerships. So I think the letter from Norfolk was circulated. It was at amenities where we discussed this last month. Norfolk County Council make a sum of money available all over Norfolk for town and parish councils to bid for, to fund small scale projects. There's a, a list of what you can and can't apply for. It's mainly like small pathways or speed cameras, not speed cameras, speed activated display, that sort of thing. We've had some success as a town council in bidding and there's been a few new pathways put in. So down by Nunnery Drive, there's a new pathway connecting the BTO bit up with Nunnery Drive entrance. There's a new drop curb on Brandon Road near to Canterbury Way, for example. That was all parish partnership funding. And we have now been invited in the last few weeks to identify what we want to apply for now, ready for next year. So from the first of April onwards. We've currently got a, a live project because we agreed at full council to allocate £10,000 for the Nuns Bridges Pathway. That's all been sent off. County tell me today that they're hoping to get full costs and information before the end of the month, which will be very useful because we're already talking about next year's parish partnership and we haven't even progressed this year's parish partnership. But that's the way councils work. And the hope was that in year two, we would bid for the second part of the Nuns Bridges Pathway. So the current one, which is progressing and we're awaiting costings and a design, is from the Middle River stream, connecting up to the pathway at the first bridge, the first bridge coming from Mill Lane. So that will create a pathway down there. And I'm hoping you'd agree that we should for next year, apply for the other side of the stream, connecting the pathway up past the Fish Pass and then joining the Arlington Way path. And that creates a nice loop all around there, stops people having to walk in the road or on the, the grass along Nuns Bridges. And it means they can get over the bridge of the middle bridge without walking into the road. So that would be our suggestion for year two. It means we're going to have to chuck some money in because they'll only fund a maximum of 50%. So we need to identify our share of that money, of whatever we apply for. It's a very chicken and egg process because we don't have a clue what the pathway would cost, but they're asking us to apply now. So it's a bit like, pick a number. But are members generally content that that's what we do for the second year?
Yeah.
Yeah. Happy with that? The maximum county contribution is 25K. And they tell me today that if it does come in under budget, then you get your share back. So in order to maximise the benefit from Norfolk, I think we should apply for 25, which means we have to put up 25 as well. But if there is any underspend or overspend on the first project, first phase, that will help us in the second year. The total project budget for the first path is 30K. So we'd be looking at a total project budget of 50K for the second path. Yeah, Yon.
I'm very pleased to hear this. Those of us who work at detail take our lives in our hands on a daily basis, finding the process bridges. I just wonder whether you think all of that role would ever be destinated.
There's some residents in Ford Street, they'll be delighted with those comments. We are not the transport authority, I'm afraid. We can tinker around the edges with a couple of paths and, you know, the rest of that. Yeah. If I can stop the HGVs down there, I feel like I've achieved something. Everyone happy with that general proposal? Yeah, so I'm happy. In terms of identifying where that money is from, open space reserve presumably. So I'm happy to propose that we allocate 25K from the open space reserve for phase two of the Nuns Bridges Pathway. Would somebody like to second that? Somebody that's a committee member? Thank you very much. Everybody happy? Agreed? Do you want to show your hands, Alan? So that's a recommendation to full council to approve. Good.
Sorry, Clive. So you said about applying for 25,000 for 50%. Do you not have to apply based on someone doing a quote?
So the way that this is an interesting part of the system. So with parish partnership, you have to indicate what project you want and you have to confirm your share of the money. And you have to physically pay your share of the money to the county. And then they go away and come up with a design and a cost. Is that right, Alan?
Then they'll come back to you and say it costs more.
And it's not enough.
Your option is, is to withdraw from the project or to negotiate a higher, a higher contributor.
And the way inflation's working at the moment, particularly construction inflation. Here we are in June, July even, making this decision. This is for the next financial year. So who knows what the cost will be by next year? Hence why I think if we go for the maximum, that's the most we can do. The second one is a new road safety community fund. Norfolk County Council have allocated a pot of money Norfolk wide per district. And I can't remember the sequence, but we are in year two or three, Breckland. It's specifically for county councillors to decide how to spend it. We each get £10,000. Can only be used on road safety projects. And I, as a county councillor, Jane, as a county councillor, could say, yep, this is what we want. And they would implement it. Probably one of the only occasions they actually do what I asked them to do. But seeing as we have an amenities committee and we're, you know, being quite proactive, I think, around road safety. And I wanted to open it up to you guys to give some advice to Jane and me about what you think would be worthwhile to spend it on. They did, hopefully you saw in the packs, they had a, a list of potential projects and some costings. You don't get a lot for 10 grand when it comes to road safety project. Is it on the screen behind me?
No, yeah.
That'd be useful because I can't find my copy.
Next B, isn't it?
Oh, thank you, Nick. Does anyone have any immediate suggestions?
I did, and I only really based on your numbers. And because it is so expensive to do anything and bearing in mind that we've put a lot or, you know, a lot of effort has been put into the 30th of September. Because it is so expensive to do anything and bearing in mind that we've put a lot or, you know, a lot of effort has been put into the thirty percent. And the fact that we've got a lot of tailgating now because people aren't taking notice of it. Probably the cheapest solution on there is the speed road roundalls. They're four hundred pound each, so I'm going to leave my job and start that as a business. But those placed on those key areas, like we enter Thetford, it can only reinforce the good work we've already done and perhaps, you know, stop a few people saying, don't do it correctly.
Well, I'm glad you said that because I've counted the number of roads coming into Thetford and there are nine. So we could put, and I agree that it's really, you know, we've done a lot of work to adjust speed and this is a natural progression. I just can't get them to put the thirty mile an hour repeater signs up, completely dragging their feet on that, drives me nuts. I did put some new speed limit signs where, no, the rectangular ones up in four locations. But these roundalls are quite cheap actually, four hundred quid, well, relative to some of the other stuff. Paid must be expensive. But nine locations would be three six hundred, so I think that's quite a decent sum. And when I spoke to county, because I spoke to the Thetford Highways guy, there are two locations in Thetford where there are twenty mile an hour zones, Cloverfield and the Abbey Estate. And he wondered if in addition to the thirty mile an hour at the entrances, we put twenty mile an hour at the entrances to those two estates. And I thought that was a good idea.
Yeah.
So that wouldn't cost too much. Hazel?
So at the last, you might need to help me on this. At the last Cloverfield's residents group, they were talking about how wait, I think I wrote it down.
The set up is not really important.
Or so, yeah, when you, the opposite end of the test goes, when you come off her way, only that side can legally be counted as a twenty mile per hour piece of road because there's not enough.
Natural warnings such as.
Like the speed, we've only got the speed bumps and apparently every two hundred metres you need some kind of.
Reminder, like each point or.
It's because there's two different types of twenty mile an hour zone. There's a twenty mile an hour recommended, which generally has all the speed calming and twenty mile an hour limit, which doesn't.
So I don't, I think it's all recommended through the estate.
Yeah, it is.
So it needs the, presumably it needs the speed. Because the reason we were talking about this, we were saying, well, how could we have a sign, we couldn't have the speed sign up in this other side of the estate because it hasn't got the speed calming. Suggest that people drive at twenty.
Okay. If, because I want to hear, the top one is around speed limits and alterations or extensions. Amending the speed, you need a traffic regulation order. The primary cost of changing Thetford's speed from a forty to a thirty was in legal fees. You know, paying people to amend the traffic regulation order. And you can see on here that in one specific location, it's talking four to ten thousand pounds, which would use up an awful lot of money. If they are happy that the, county are happy that the existing traffic regulation order for Cloverfield's allowed it to be twenty, they're generally content that that would be a good thing to do. Yeah, yeah, I'll get them to check that.
Yeah.
Stuart?
On the speed limit signs, though, you won't get thirty mile repeaters if there's street lights. If there's no street lights in a thirty mile zone, you'll get repeaters.
Yeah. I think one of the reasons county are playing hardball on it, because if they were to deviate from the rule, in fact, every other community will want additional repeaters. That's the problem.
That the lights out.
Yeah. Any other suggestions? No. I think the deadline for county councillors to submit ideas was September from memory. So if you think of anything else, if you go to any residence group and there are particular issues, do feed it in. I'll have a conversation with Jane. She doesn't have to adopt our suggestions. I can only use my share on Thetford West and she can only use her share on Thetford East. So I'm hoping we'll agree to do the roundalls together and the twenty mile an hour ones. The only other suggestions were outside schools. I think there's been a change to the law that you don't need the traffic regulation order to be changed to put the zigzags outside schools now. And I must confess, I can't recall which schools have them and which don't, so I'm going to take.
Animals used to have a twenty, didn't they?
It has, it has got one.
Everyone's got twenty. It feels sunny, hasn't it?
Yeah. I'll do a bit of a recu, but if any of you spot areas outside schools that would benefit from that. Yeah.
A lot, a lot of the ones outside schools end up like the Cloverfield ones where they've got twenty is plenty. Kind of thing. It's an advisory, would you mind offering?
So the decision required is to identify projects and agree a process. So do feed in if you get any other suggestions, but potentially between parish partnership, road safety community fund and our existing local member highways budget, you know, there is some opportunity there. And then the last one on applications is free, which is a greening our community fund. And this is a fund administered by Norfolk Community Foundation. Hopefully you all saw the report that I circulated yesterday, possibly today, can't quite remember. Which ties in with the commitment we've made in relation to pocket parks. Let me just. There's no guarantee we'll get the money, but it makes sense to at least try to get some additional money to support what we want to do. And we've already had good success with the licence and the cap deals along Kim's Bell. I thought that worked really well. And we probably have licenses for other locations, I just couldn't think of any. But the idea was that we adopt these five locations for three years and work with the community to improve them. The locations are on Formaston Road, near the entrance to Stanley Fourth Road, Kim's Bell London Road junction, St Martin's Way, the shrub beds running along the front of St Martin's Way facing London Road, Rosecroft Way, the space next to Cloverfield Church, and the Lady Estate, the open space in the middle of the estate. Are you happy with those suggestions? Would you like any changes? Would you like any areas added?
I believe that we're going to be offered the space on Glebe. It's been such a contentious area for, you know, development. Would it not be wise to put that in?
Romwood Hill.
Sure, we'd be pleased to be with you.
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea, actually. One way or the other, it's, it's a community space and either ours or Breckland's, we might not need a licence if they do transfer it to us, but it's a good one to add to the list.
A bit of a mischievous thing, but.
Are you?
Would it be worthwhile sort of looking at some Breckland Bridge areas for this?
Are you thinking of some areas on the Woodlands estate?
I was actually, funny enough.
Do you have any?
Bottom of the bed's close.
Particular line? I did think bottom of bed's close, you know.
Got two very nice residents who live there or have a lot to do with. They want some trees on there. I think that'd be perfect.
The danger is that we adopt too many and then the budget doesn't go far enough, but it's like how long is a piece of string, you know, it's. If some of these areas won't cost a huge amount, the one on Formaston Road is tiny. So.
Yeah, really.
Burn's best. That's seven locations. Hazel?
Also, just best locations.
Good.
The only one I'm really familiar with is the Rosecroft Way one by Cloverfield Church. I think residents would be really pleased with that because they want to do something. Would we need to, like, would we have the whole area? Would we have an option to have a smaller part to it?
We could have a smaller part. I mean, all of these locations at the moment are owned by Breckland. So essentially we would go to them and say, this is the area we want. Can we have a licence? They may say no to some of them. But the one that I'm most nervous about is the Rosecroft Way one, partly because it's so big. But also I'm aware of, you know, historical issues there and it's very close to residents' houses, so we need to be very mindful about what we do there.
Yeah, I can see. It's a big area. It's due with some, there's a lot of litter and things. Also, there's some really nice wildflowers, so it'd be kind of integrative, but yeah, we'll get to that further.
Yeah. Okay.
We make a decision in principle and recommend because again, it's budget implications, so we can either go and do a bit of costing and work out, do a little bit of investment, work and then come back to council. Be that's committed to the council.
Yep. So in terms of wording, are we agreeing in principle to submit the application?
Yeah.
Based on those seven locations? If we are successful, that will be, the match funding will be funded from the open space reserve.
And then just like, there has to be some financial kind of ring fix.
And if, if the application is approved, a costed proposal brought back to committee?
Brilliant.
Yeah. Hope you got on that. I won't be able to say it.
We've recorded. I'll see you in about a five years, you're there. You listen to it quite often.
Was that satisfied from a process point of view?
Perfectly fine.
And is that the recommendation to full council?
It's a recommendation to full council.
Cool. Would somebody like to second that, please? Mac?
Thank you very much.
All in agreement? Brilliant. Moving on to correspondence. To note a request to review mobility scooter access to Barnham Cross Common. This is a correspondence from a member of the public. Did you want to say any more on that one, Nick? Bit background?
Yeah, so a couple who live in Thetford unfortunately are no longer to sort of be able body to walk and they now rely on mobility scooters to get them around. And they've kind of requested that we kind of look at the possibilities of allowing mobility scooters to be able to access the Barnham Common. It was one of the areas in Thetford that they really enjoyed walking as a couple. And unfortunately now because of obviously their mobility restrictions, they're not no longer, you know, able to get onto the site because the kissing gates won't allow the mobility scooter through. I am going to meet him tomorrow with Natural England and I'll be talking to the lady tomorrow about this and how we could probably go forward with some solutions I could perhaps bring back to the committee. Because it's a little bit of a grey area because obviously if we have an access gate, we could potentially allow access for motorbikes and things which we don't want. So that's it. That's always a difficult one, but I will speak to them tomorrow and see what their recommendations are on other sites that they manage overall as a triple F I site and how they can sort of, you know, guide us forward with that one.
I've got one question on that, Nick. I did have a look at this today. And if mobility scooters go onto Barnham Cross, that's quite an off-road piece of ground. Now, I've got a severely disabled friend and his off-road vehicle is like a huge quad bike.
Yeah.
You know, so that's kind of what we, they are going to need to get around. I've got two questions. One is the physical access piece and, you know, the police need to be sort of kept on that. So I've been having trouble with quads anyway. But the other thing is whether they're going to be able to not get stuck when they get in there. That's, that's more the point, you know. It's, it's really heavily rutted, you know, there's a lot of rabbit activity, so it won't take much. I remember having to push Colin Arms off a piece of flowerbed once and it's not easy. So that's my only question.
No, I agree. What did the BTI do in terms of disabled access to BTO land?
Good question. We came up just over the weekend, actually, that we've got kissing gated access to the reserve.
Yeah.
We'd like to change what we have and I had thought to do instead.
Yeah, there's a ramp put down onto the, that red path by the river along Alton Way, isn't there? Oh, that's right. So there's, at the start of Alton Way, there's a house there and there's a little girl, and she's not, this was age ago, she's a probably a grown woman now. There's a person in a wheelchair that lives there and they were given a key to access the BTO reserve. I think Ian Henderson gave them a key, so I wonder if there's something we could do to limit access.
Yeah, I can definitely get advice from Natural England is the right way. They must come across this all the time, but I think the general principle is we will do what we can to facilitate access, but as, as Mac said, there are other implications. I hate for somebody to get stranded out there. I mean, in lots of places you can get these sort of off-road wheelchairs and stuff because your average day-to-day wheelchair is just not going to be sufficient. But if you report back next month on how that goes, hopefully that's useful.
Yeah.
Okay, second one. We received a request from a resident to have the Fairfield's play area upgraded. Was it used, true? What we got on that one? Any, what sort of upgrade are we talking?
I think at the moment we're sort of primarily trying to concentrate on the boundaries, aren't we, and getting the surfacing up to speed on all our sites for safety compliance. And then we're going to be looking at the upgrades of how we go forward on some of the sites. So primarily we want to obviously get the Castle Park as a primary one because that's quite degraded now, the surf and it's in desperate need. Once we get these permissions through from Historic England, we can obviously then proceed with that and get that one out of the way. I think that is pretty much the last major site that needs the major work of surfacing. We've managed to sort of combat it over the last year, year or two with other bits of maintenance we've had done on the sites. So that's something we could look at potentially going forward as to how we then go to revamp and which ones we obviously then do.
Yep.
Primarily that could be considered Fairfield to the committee.
Happy? I'm looking to the four of you here that represent Fairfield, whether that's on district or town. But when I was talking to Nick about this last week, it occurred to me that for the whole of Woodlands, Fairfields, Highlands and Norwich Road Estate, that is the only play area and it's tiny. Is there another one?
Yeah, there's one at the top of Harrow Martine.
It's not been finished yet.
Yeah, I'm thinking on the Croxton roadside, on the, you know, that side of the main road. I was a parent, I would let my child on the road to go.
Some way short, probably some way short finishing there.
Yeah, I've had an inquiry about that.
Yeah, so between Norwich Road and.
Oh, yeah.
So it probably could do with an upgrade because it is tiny. I assume that we only own the boundary fence of the play area and everything on the other side is Breckland. So if we wanted to add much to it, we would have to take on more land. It's a bit more complicated, but I mean, what do you guys feel that?
It does need it. You know, like you say, it's a new small park and considering the school's got six hundred pupils there and everybody's sorry they want to play at the same time and they're in trouble. But what the other thing that I'm thinking about is not just Drake, Fairfield's play park is all parked in heaven. What provision is there for disabled people?
We've got some nest swings that are on the, some of the play parks like Castle Park, Cannon's Walk. And they are able to sort of go on those. So there is a few, but we could always improve. There's always more equipment coming through, you know, that gives accessibility to people, you know, and they're able to enjoy the play park even more. So that's something, again, that's a part of the upgrades we could obviously take into account, definitely.
And does the, sorry, and does the land on the Fairfield's play park, because you say you need the extra space, so now, does the school own the bit that's fenced off? Because they've now got a running track on that. Is that their BBS there then?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Mac?
I just have one comment on it. With, with such demand for play parks and they are so horrendously expensive to both maintain or build anything new. One thing that might offset this is signage that directs people. So for instance, on Norwich Road, if it, if they are directed to a play park in that direction over the bridge round the corner, it might sway some of that desire for people to get another play park built because we couldn't afford it.
Yeah.
We might afford a sign.
Yeah.
Or two.
I did say to Nick when he mentioned this, we're having a hard enough job maintaining what we've got rather than expanding. But I think each community of Thetford deserves one decent play area. I mean, we could also say that of course Cloverfield's only has a tiny play area for the whole of a thousand houses on Cloverfield's. But in terms of Fairfields, I do think actually it does need to, does need to improve. I wonder if the first action, Nick, would be to have some sort of informal initial conversations with Breckland.
Yeah.
Because we need to know what window we're working with and if the window is the existing play area, that dictates the amount of equipment we could use in there. There's rules about spacing and safety matting and all the rest of it.
Yeah.
If we have the potential to get more space, then we can think more about improving it and increasing it. So maybe if we do that as an initial and then take it from there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we could put some juice, budget process and simply.
Yeah, and it will feed into the budget process. Sorry, Stuart.
Can the area not Ramsey Close be rejuvenated? It always used to be a park.
Well, I've got, I do have some information on that. So as a residents association, we've worked for years trying to get that to be a play park because it used to be. And and the um because it's council owned as well, it it flip-flopped back and forward. And and actually, as we went along, the price just became so prohibitive, it was no good. More importantly, and I think it's something we ought to consider about citing, is it's out of sight. And it it really isn't suitable for a play park.
Yeah.
Um and so the the little venture that the town council have in making it a wild play park really didn't scratch anything to be honest. It, you know, it just became an overgrown area that isn't maintained. But we had a conversation at our last um residents meeting and we've been pushing for this a long time. That actually a better use might be an allotment. It it will do two things. Firstly, it will be looked after because currently it's a it's a burden and it's at the end of a cul-de-sac. Um and and it will be something that will enhance a town, you know, as we get bigger, why don't we need more?
Yeah.
At allotments. Often, so to update you on that, um I've spoken to Chris and that's on the next agenda, isn't it?
The issue there is a a covenant that dictates play use, so presumably the proposals to try and change.
Yeah, that that requires solicitor.
So potentially what we could do is if allotments committee are happy, um turn that into allotments, declassifying the spaces play park, but look to put some more money into the Fairfield's play park and have that as a recognised play park for the whole area.
There there are two options there. You can you can de-designate it as a play park or redesignate it as both or redesignate it as just allotments. I don't I don't know what the implications of that are.
I've got Doug then Mac.
Okay, uh it's kind of England's just can't buy allotments. If we were having allotments there, that would bring money in, wouldn't it? Um well, it would bring some money, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it would. I can't remember how much an allotment is, but it's not a lot.
It's not a lot.
We need to put the allotments up, don't we, Glen?
Yeah, you won't get a huge amount of.
It would bring some money in. I don't know. I've got Mac next.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Sorry, uh if it was that, the um the one thing we were going to suggest is if if we can have allotments on there, um you know, there is a facility for um turning vehicles, parking, which will, you know, a lot of concerns are from residents who live down there. It's just going to be a massive traffic problem. But the other thing is that there are, I believe there are, uh there is funding available for junior allotments and junior groups. Now, bear in mind, we've got two schools just up the road.
Yeah.
Um if it's a community thing with kids involved, that might scratch some of the itch of this um the play park kind of thing. So if there's a junior element to it, because, you know, let's be honest, allotments are very scary places. If you try to do it as a kid and went down to one at Mumford because, you know, most of the people are are older than me.
Uh thank you. Terry, did you want to come back?
I'm trading off with the sports pitch. Coming back on what what you said, um roughly, and this is just a round number, a allotment's about fifty quid a year. So and there's, we've done a little survey, there's room for eight parking spaces and ten allotments up there. But you're going to get five hundred quid a year.
Okay.
It's it's not a lot. It's not a lot. And there's a Just just a just, you know, sort of round numbers.
And there's a billion there as well.
There is.
Yeah.
Is there? Right, yeah. Is there a bench? Okay, um god, we should be the allotment committee. Um I think at this stage, if we uh have some conversations with Breckland about um size of potential play areas, Fairfields, but there's a bit of joint working there, I think, with allotments committee about uh rearranging space to a better use and then potentially upgrading Fairfield's play area.
They're not use the land that goes into Frederick's Wood. That's a green space. Is that belong to Fethford?
Uh Breckland.
Oh, that's Breckland.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we'll leave that one there for the time being.
Right, just asking in general about pay parks. Have you had a time around soon in the winter? Um with the, you're getting um Castle Park, I've got the final one. And then they say it's a proposed, okay, what can you do that is our next step?
Yeah, so the last time around, we sort of worked with our play parks contractor. Um they'd done a sort of survey for us to sort of highlight any sort of needs of issues that they could sort of highlight as a potential um of upgrades. Um working alongside myself and the team um and the committee. And then obviously we went from that point and obviously started to upgrade where we were sort of significantly sort of, you know, needing those um final upgrades on surfacing. But we certainly will be looking, obviously with yourselves, to try and move forward and where we can do the further upgrades um alongside our contractor.
Yeah. Does that mean when we get past in that, it's almost like a porch from the right, what do you do now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We we own eleven play areas as a town council. Um historically, we didn't own any. They were all owned by the district council, but they passed them on to the town council. Uh along with toilets and various forests and everything else. Um and they've always cost a reasonable amount of money, but in the last two years, typically, you know, steel and that sort of price, it's costing us money. So in the last financial year, we budgeted, we budgeted fifteen K a year for maintenance and repairs. Last year, we budgeted an extra forty K and this financial year, another forty K because the fifteen wasn't covering it basically. And some longstanding items of equipment needed to be replaced and the matting, which is a big expense. So, you know, we are in a twelve-month period, probably spending about a hundred K on play areas alone.
Yeah.
That's without much new equipment. Uh right, last one on this one, uh signage bulk buying through Breckland to consider an offer from Breckland Council to use their supplier to bulk buy signage on the basis that it is easier to get a discounted pricing on district-wide purchasing, noting that Breckland Council are not offering subsidies. Anything you wanted to add to that, Nick?
Um I think obviously with the signage we we sort of purchase in as a council is very small and limited at the moment. I mean, potentially if we go forward and we want to do more with play parks and stuff, potentially, but it depends on the kind of um signage they're offering. Um I know some of the proposal stuff was sort of around street drinking and stuff, which is more of a district issue. Um so it's kind of a bit of a, I think we'd have to look into it a little bit more and see what the actual signage is that they're offering and what kind of, if there is any development that we could, you know, particularly sort of choose the signage that we wanted.
Yeah.
Um through their supplier.
Um presumably if we opt in, we're not obligated to order a certain amount or frequency. It's just a as and when.
As and when.
So we could opt in even if we then don't actually use it.
Yeah.
With the context of this, they were saying some of the parish councils, for example, put up a little printed job, you know, do not do something and, you know, put it into a plastic folder and then it's glued onto the And so I think it's really clear that that's saying that they reckon council that they're more professional signing into have a climate result. So that's why they set this up.
I've just got one other thing on signage. I talked about play parks, but we we often talk about um trying to improve the nature part of our town. You know, as we kind of rewild small areas, it might be well worth having signs up that say this area is left for the, you know, birds, bees, butterflies or whatever. Because, again, we've got a couple of small signs have been put in at the back of um the sports centre where we've got those and then what lasts.
Where are your kids?
Bee orchids. And, you you know, I might as well have dropped a load of bag packets down there to.
That wasn't us.
But what I'm trying to say is a a more professional look at it, people might think, well, actually, they're they're doing something that's constructive rather than just not mowing.
We put some signs up in some of the areas that um Breckland have obviously worked alongside ourselves to sort of rewild a little bit and let wildflowers grow. Um and the the term was, don't mind the weeds, we're feeding the bees. Um and literally within about a week, week and a half, they'd gone. Um we've lost them, so we've just ordered some more to go up into those areas. Um but we could certainly put some more, you know, we could have some signage to sort of say the background of why we're doing it. I think that'd be very beneficial in the sense that people understand, you know, the reasons behind it rather than, you know, um the sort of the historical side of the site and obviously what the the attempt is of the the wildflowers and and recreating, you know, for wildlife. I think that's a good way forward potentially.
Okay, thanks.
So um given there's no uh onerous commitments or requirements to minimum orders, are you committee happy that we sign up to this and uh maybe useful, it may not? Yeah.
Just I'm I'm being cynical here. This doesn't mean that, you know, should Breckland want some signs, say, well, you can buy them yourselves now.
I don't know.
Would you want one?
Well, I I would much rather a um a a joint purchasing of litter bins and dog waste. Yeah, I mean, a litter bin is five hundred pounds a pop, you know. Surely we need a Breckland-wide approach and buy the stock at the start of each voluntary. That would save an awful lot more money than signs.
And and by way, to to add to that, it might be nice if, so I might say wrong thing here, if we had a standardized litter bin.
Yes.
Because there's so many different types on.
Yeah, so we'll we'll give this a go and see.
Town Council or Breckland District Council, I'm looking at. Say who belongs.
Yeah. Uh okay, we'll move on, folks. Uh one free one action points. So Karen has very kindly typed up a list of all of the actions that we agreed at the last meeting and I'll just rattle through to make sure uh we know where we're at with all of them. We might be able to take a couple of them off. Uh so the first one was the burial administrator was asked to circulate the text relating to the notice boards at the cemetery to the committee. Not aware that that's been done yet, so.
Be done.
Might be premature, it's not there.
No, none of these have been done.
None of these have been done. Oh. Well, when we take it any off then. I'm going to ask him anyway. Uh a letter to be written to the Environment Agency to reduce frequency of groundwater monitoring. Organise a presentation to all councillors on the management plans of the open space areas owned and managed by the council. We've touched upon that. Uh to respond to the donor for the Fee Power Tree Memorial and confirm next steps. Um that one was quite timely. Have we gone back to the chap that made the offer?
No, not to.
Uh because I noticed the invite's gone out to councillors for the Fee Power Memorial event on the fifteenth of August. I think that's when it is. So probably won't be able to do that in time, but at least if we could go back to that person fairly soon. To review the open space policy and to include toilet provision and parking requirements in the policy. And again, that's uh likely for the September meeting. To review the small grant policy, taking into account the monetary value of the grant and registered charities. And that's September as well. Were there any other actions that we agreed to last month or this evening that people would like added? No. Um the other signage related job, Nick, was the um uh I can't remember what they're called, but the ones on the common land.
Yes, the bylaw signs.
Bylaw signs.
Yeah.
Uh so that's in the minutes as an action, but if we could add it to the action plan.
Not quite on the table.
If we could uh so give it its own little row.
Oh, I've been in touch with the uh signage contractor today. Um he is nearly just finalising the pre-freeed. Um and I can bring that back for the committee to look at and discuss. You have to make sure everybody's happy before we proceed with the signage.
Okay. Just have a look. Um so the action subject on parish partnership, subject for council approval, submit the parish partnership bid. So we're going to add that one on. And contact Breckland Council in relation to Fairfield's play area. They're the two from today. Uh then we have community engagement. Uh I would suggest the press release about the SAM two signage would be good.
I'll do that, thank you.
Yeah.
Um I was all set out for the letter. It's supposed to be a bit bite to my uh the committee would agree, set out, for example, where the areas of littering and uh attach that in the presentation pack. But it's just the committee made a look at that because I have to bring it back to the next meeting for a formal decision because we have a agenda. But that is in the in the presentation pack and uh you can comment in.
Yep.
The authorizer for the next meeting.
Did you want to say anything else about that one, Hazel?
Um that was just in response to a question that Glen raised at the, was it the last amenities or the one before?
Uh council meeting.
Council it was, wasn't it? And so I did say my letter is specific, but um it's been obviously that bit taken out. Fine, so it's an example that we could send to local businesses just to say, you make the town look a bit nicer, clean up your letter.
Okay, so if folks have a read of that and uh bring any comments or suggestions, the idea is we establish a template essentially. Um uh we can use going forward and use our influence and soft power.
I guess the only thing to mention other than that is this is specifically litter, but we might want to talk about if it wants to be more broad and cover other aspects as well.
Yeah. Um and the other press release uh is around small grants. So we had a conversation last month about needing to promote small grants again. I don't think that happens. If we could promote that, that would be good. Uh that deals with community engagement, committee officers update, anything else from yourself, Annan?
Yeah, I've just got one. Um so we recently had a letter um sent in. It was addressed to the mayor um from a local resident of St Martin's Way um complaining of the um trial bikes, uh motorbikes and quad bikes on the Barnham Common football fields. Um there seems to be an ongoing issue on the area where they're coming through from the top end of Elm Road End and near the Pine Coast Shops. Um I'm due, again, like I say, tomorrow to meet with a lady from Natural England who I'll speak to again about some ideas of what she could potentially maybe recommend. Um we have put a report through to the police again, just to make them aware that obviously we've got some ongoing issues down in that area. Um and I will be looking at the ownership and working alongside Breckland just to see who owns that bit of woodland at the top. Um and whether any barriers or anything can be put in to stop the access where they're coming through. Uh just to try and help restrict the issues surrounding the antisocial behaviour. Um so it's just a note that obviously we have had a resident write-in. Um I just sort of mentioned that there are a lot of problems down in that area at the moment.
Wouldn't it be able to share that with me, that letter?
It's just that we've got a stag meeting tomorrow and I can mention it to the police. That's the thing.
Okay, so while we're on this, um similar issue, had a similar press from two people on the latest estate. Same thing, the path between um the estate that that runs between the hub and the industrial estate down at the bottom end, near the industrial estate bikes going up and down there. Um I've had a chat with County and I think Terry, you got into County, didn't you? Um the the problem there is it's part of the uh cycle network around the town. So there isn't much you can do in terms of physical barrier because that stops bikes as well. But the reason I'm saying this is if you could take that to stag as well, that would be really appreciated because um in the end, it's an enforcement issue, isn't it?
I I know this always comes back. The police always say that the the thing they need, even if it isn't reported continually, they need to know a bit of intelligence. When it regularly happens, what time of day, how many bikes, what do they look like?
Two bikes, the same two guys.
Yeah, so if they can get that information, they can do something about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Licensed players would be ideal.
Well, perfect, but they're normally too quick for anybody to catch them.
Hmm.
To be fair.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for taking that one, Nick. I know it's uh takes a quite a lot of time. And the only other thing I wanted to mention under committee officers update, um you might have seen on social media some uh comments about the cemetery and summer opening hours. Uh and I must confess, I thought we dealt with this last year because historically, as a cemetery committee before it merged into amenities, um historically, the cemetery was always open until seven o'clock in the summer. Um but it currently and has been for a while at being locked at four o'clock. And obviously that's not great if you work and you want to visit loved ones in the cemetery. Um the problem we've got is the cemetery is locked Monday to Thursday by our own staff uh who finish at
Four o'clock?
Four o'clock. So you do it as a sort of last job of the day. Uh if we were to, we'd either have to pay a contractor company to lock the gate for us at seven uh or employ a member of a new member of staff to do that. So it's expensive. Um and that's probably the reason it was never implemented when we spoke about it last year because it wasn't bu- budgeted. We do have a contractor who locks it at four o'clock on a Friday and over the weekend and they unlock it into the weekend. So that service is all already in place. I've been having some conversations with the town clerk about what we can do about this because I've been, I am keen for the cemetery to be open for longer in the summer. It's as simple as that. So it was too late for today's agenda because the agenda was already published. So it was too late for today's agenda because the agenda was already published. Um but we're going to take a proposal to the planning committee next Tuesday um where we are going to ask for consent from council for a pilot to leave the cemetery unlocked um for the remainder of the summer, probably to the end of September uh as a trial to see how that works. It occurs to me that it's not overly difficult to get into the cemetery, even if the gate is locked. I think I could probably manage to get over the fence, so I'm sure if you're up to no good, you probably could as well. Um although obviously there are concerns about antisocial behaviour and noise and everything like that. So um I think we should give it a go uh uh and see if, you know, it can come to a solution. Um and revert back to the winter opening hours from the first of October. That would give us some information when we set the budgets so that we can decide what we want to do for next year. But essentially, from next Tuesday onwards, we'd be looking to to leave it open until, well, leave it open. But I think we should put some posters up to make the expectation is you're out by seven. That's how best to deal with that. Stuart?
Is it more easier just to leave the Formaston Road entrance open and shut the eleven one?
Um I can't quite remember what was in the report, but that's the proposal, isn't it? The London Road Gate Car Park one will be locked.
The proposal is that the car exit was was still be closing four o'clock, but you will be able to have the dish in after this afternoon.
Mac?
Um I travel a lot of cemeteries, as you imagine, and many of them now have got self-closing gates. It's it's it is a cost to the initial outway, but it takes all the hassle out of it. You've got maintenance thereafter, but you've got no staff issues. You can program it for winter and summer months and the bomb's done. And um I do know that on similar-sized towns with cemeteries, they have had a lot of antisocial behaviour being left open. And and the unfortunate thing was, uh some of the, um some of the headstones are broken. And of course, that attracts, you know, massive um, you know, passionate problems within the community. So I I just put that out as a word of warning, you know, should it happen, it really is quite difficult. Um but if we do need it, I I do have contacts for gates that have been used because obviously my missus has done it for Berry and Newmarket.
Um it'd be useful if you could forward that in.
Right. Give you those details. I don't know what the offset would look like compared to how much we pay people per year.
Yeah.
You know, uh but it would take all the hassle out eventually.
Well, uh as I say, uh I wanted to mention it, so it's not a shock uh to you guys as a allotments and cemetery committee, but it will go to planning next week, um and it'll be for a pilot from next week, the end of September. So you can have the debate there, but just to give you early sight of that. Okay, uh that concludes our agenda for the day. Thank you very much for your contributions and see you next month.
See the planning go through or application to the three G pitch? That that is one of the worst pieces of planning I've ever seen because it doesn't describe anything. There's no pictures. They've just got a big.